Firstly, could I please invite all present within the hall and online to mute or turn off microphones and to respectfully observe a two-minute silence? We had a wee bit of practice there. In honour of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. You're welcome to stand if you wish. So, thank you to members and welcome to this special meeting of full council. This meeting's been live streamed and recorded and the recording will be made available on the council website for public viewing. Could I also welcome Sophie Wilson, Riley True and Kenzie Miller from the Dumfries and Galloway Youth Council who I'm very pleased to see with us today. For remote participants, please could you follow the good practice guidance which includes muting microphones and switching off your video when you're not addressing the meeting, writing 'speak' in the MS Teams chat function when you want to contribute. If you're in the hall, you can do this in your iPhone or iPad. And all members should speak clearly and directly into the microphone when making contributions and when referring to reports, not that there's many today. Please provide reference to the relevant page and paragraph so that everyone can follow. Formal business first. So Vlad, could you please provide the sedent and any apologies please?
Thank you convener, if you'd just bear with us. I can confirm we have received apologies from councillor Wood. We have nineteen members present at the hall and we have fifteen members present on the Teams platform.
Thanks Vlad. And I confirm my agreement to the participation of those members recorded as participating remotely. Do any members have any declarations of interest they wish to make? Okay, so with the formalities over, we can now move on to the purpose of this meeting which is to reflect on the life and arrangements on the recent death of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II and the accession of His Majesty King Charles III. Please note we have a further item of business relating to the National Day of Mourning. Could I intimit that in liaison with myself and co-leader councillor Dorward and other group leaders and in line with the scheme of delegation to officers, the proper officer has cancelled all committees and subcommittees with immediate effect during the period of national mourning. Normal business will resume on Tuesday 20th of September 2022, the day after the state funeral and National Day of Mourning. As discussed with the political group leaders, it's my intention to give all political groups an opportunity to share their reflections on the recent passing of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II and the accession of King Charles III. Following on from my own contribution as convener and leader of the SNP group, I'll thereafter invite the following people to address the meeting. Councillor Dorward, Deputy Convener and Leader of the Labour Group; councillor Little, Provost of Dumfries; councillor Broady, Leader of the Independent Group; councillor McGregor, Leader of the Conservative and Unionist Group; councillor Stitt on behalf of councillor Dryborough as the Armed Forces Champion; care-experienced youth councillor Sophie Wilson and Lockerwold youth councillor Riley True of the Dumfries and Galloway Youth Council. And following on from these contributions, I'll then invite those members who wish to speak to address the meeting. Since the sad news of Thursday evening, our region has shared in the grief being felt around the United Kingdom and for many people around the world. Our council has supported our Lord Lieutenant's and communities, not only in the formal requirements but in a wider civic leadership role. And I would like to thank all of you for your contributions to that in your wards. I'd particularly like to thank our staff team for their hard work. There are too many people to mention and this is not the time for that. But when called upon, they have ensured that the people of our region have been able to express their feelings in books of condolences, with flowers, attending proclamation events and viewing our flags, all of which again reflect our organisation's leadership role. It has been a somber privilege to be the convener over these days and to be part of this history-making period. I wrote in my contribution in the book of condolence that the late Queen has been an exemplar of duty and diligence in fulfilling her role to so many people and for so many years. She has been a model for any civic leader to follow and has been worthy of the accolades that are being expressed. One that has struck me and maybe only makes sense in Scotland is, she did better than good, she did no bad. As His Majesty King Charles III is welcomed to the throne, we may see a resonance with the many issues that are important to our region in this council. The importance for the countryside and the environment, concern about climate change and a passion to provide practical support to help young people into employment. So along with the new monarch, we look forward to supporting a shared endeavour of caring for the people of Dumfries and Galloway for many years to come. When the deputy convener and I send the letter of condolence to His Majesty, the day after the funeral, we will attempt to convey these thoughts and the others that are to be expressed later in this meeting. Thank you. Vice convener.
Thank you convener. As deputy convener and also as Labour Group leader, on behalf of the Scottish Labour Group and Dumfries and Galloway Council, I would want to state our heartfelt condolences to King Charles III and the royal family on the loss of Her Majesty the Queen and to give thanks for her long life dedicated to public service and unwavering commitment to her role and duty. I also want to pledge our continued support for the King in the undertaking of his duties. Yesterday, in my role as deputy convener, I had the honour of representing Dumfries and Galloway Council, the region and people of this area at the service of Thanksgiving for Her Late Majesty St Giles Cathedral in our capital and at the motion of condolence for Her Majesty the Queen at the Scottish Parliament. On Sunday, I read out the proclamation in Dumfries for our new King Charles III, ably supported by elected members from all political groups. It was a privilege to represent our region as such and a sad pivotal time for us all. Saying goodbye to our late Majesty Queen Elizabeth II and welcoming our new King Charles III as he begins his reign in Scotland and in the UK. From a personal perspective, losing Her Majesty for me is like losing a member of my family. She's been there for my entire life. The Queen was born in the same decade as my own mother and I believe that having lived through the years of the Depression and World War Two, these two women from entirely different backgrounds shared similar values shaped by these times. Values like 'don't moan', 'keep going', 'stay useful', values which we would all do well to try and live by today. For me as a newly-elected member, part of a speech given by Her Majesty in 1952 is as relevant today as it was then. And she said, 'Many grave problems and difficulties confront us all, but with a new faith in the old and splendid beliefs given to us by our forefathers and the strength to venture beyond the safeties of the past, I know we shall be worthy of our duty.' And finally, as some of you may know, prior to undertaking this role, I was a civil servant working for the Scottish Prison Service, latterly as a prison governor but initially in uniform. Uniformed staff in the prison service proudly wear HMP, Her Majesty's Prison, on their epaulettes. We served her with pride and I was honoured to work for her. She was my ultimate boss and the best leader I could have. I would from this perspective like to end by saying thank you ma'am for your service and rest in peace. God save the King.
Thank you, Deputy convener. Can I now invite councillor Little as Provost of Dumfries to say a few words?
Thank you convener and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. This year of the Queen's Platinum Jubilee has been for me an education about the links between the town of Dumfries, of which I am greatly honoured to be its provost, and the Queen and her predecessors. Although we were not successful in the Jubilee competition to become a city, the discussions that we had across partners and with our communities and the information that was researched demonstrated so well the close bonds between Her Majesty and Dumfries. We are Queen of the South, but she was Queen on a whole different level. The many messages, pictures being shared are incredibly moving and demonstrate so clearly how much she was loved. And there are many stories of Her Majesty's kindness and exchanges being shared in homes, places of worship, community groups and even pubs too. The convener thanked the staff earlier and I think one reason why there's been that willingness to help is because who it was all for. I know for example in one of the customer service centres, that beside the book of condolence was a small posy of sweet pea flowers that had been placed because that was Her Majesty's favourite, a thoughtful and kind gesture. We look forward to working with His Majesty the King and trust that his involvement with Dumfries House means he has a good awareness of our town already. Thank you.
Thank you Provost. Can I now invite councillor Broady for the Independent Group?
Thank you leader. On behalf of the Independent Group, I would like to pay tribute to our sadly departing monarch, Queen Elizabeth. As you can imagine, our group has a wide divergent range of views in politics, the monarchy and society. But the one thing we all agree on is that our Queen did a fantastic job for our country over seven decades and we will never see her like again. In fact, Her Majesty would have been a great leader of the Independents because she managed to bring together different people from different backgrounds and interests, not only in Scotland and the United Kingdom but in the wider Commonwealth. What a great steadying force for good our Queen Elizabeth was. She quietly demonstrated that you don't always need power to have influence. Her personal qualities and diplomacy have steered our nation through many troubled waters and for that we are so very grateful. She was a calming breeze in a world of tempestuous storms. The Queen touched all our lives and visited so many of our local communities. I can still remember in the 1970s how thousands of people thronged the streets of Aran to see her open her new police station. God knows how many of that crowd were later detained at Her Majesty's pleasure in those new state cells in coming years. This connection with the community is carried on by our children. I had the pleasure of escorting Princess Anne when she came to open the Devil's Porridge Museum, which among other things commemorates the visit of George V, her grandfather, to Eisteddfyrin Grathna in 1917. His great-grandson is now King Charles III. We wish Charles all the best in keeping his commitment to our communities going. We give our wholehearted support to his endeavours to make this country and the Commonwealth a better place to live in, not only maintaining his mother's good work but also promoting his commitment to action on the climate emergency. Finally, if you permit me a bit of humour hopefully, I will finish with reference to Princess Anne's visit to the Devil's Porridge where she met our volunteers. One of them was Jock Thorburn, who looked after our Dig for Victory garden. Approaching eighty years of age, he had some difficulty in assimilating the protocols you should adopt when speaking to royalty. So as she was leaving, phrases like 'Your Royal Highness' flew out of his head. As the immortal words were, 'Aye, you're doing a grand job pet, keep up the good work.' So if Queen Elizabeth is listening above, if you can excuse the political incorrectness, may I say, 'Your Majesty, you definitely did a grand job pet. May you rest in peace.'
Thank you councillor Broady. And can I now invite councillor McGregor on behalf of the Conservative and Unionist Group?
Thank you convener and thank you for the opportunity to pay respects to Her Majesty. My own reflections and that of colleagues in my group are going to focus on the strong alliances and wise counsel that the Queen delivered over her long reign. Alliances with people with different personalities. Every single Prime Minister of this country has commented on how important audiences with her were. I was never privileged enough to meet her. She provided continuity in politics, which politics doesn't usually allow for and it's a testament to her determination, duty and service that she met with the new Prime Minister last week, only two days before she died. She had alliances with people from different walks of life. Her life at Balmoral, her estate workers, international pop stars at Jubilee concerts, world leaders, human rights icons, the horse racing fraternity, horses, dogs, things that are very close to my heart. Everyone who came into contact with her, as the phrase goes, didn't have a bad word to say about her and who of us can claim that? And of course alliances with people from all geographies. She visited our region on a number of occasions, most recently to Castle Douglas and Cuckoobury in July 2010 as we saw earlier on. And it was particularly pleasing to see that the photo of Her Majesty beside King Charles on his address to the nation last week was from that very visit. She was more than a Queen of this country and the Commonwealth and the most recognised person on this planet. Her likes will never be seen again and we've been lucky to be part of her reign. I like many have reflected in recent days what the Queen meant to me. I've tried to recollect when Her Majesty first came into my consciousness and I can think of no moment. It was as if she's always been intrinsically intertwined in my very being. Her Majesty was an exemplary public servant, a role model, an inspiration and a perfect example of how we should all conduct ourselves with humility, fairness and care. example of how we should all conduct ourselves, with humility, fairness and care. But with positivity, things move forward. We look to the future with our new King, Charles III, with confidence and optimism, knowing that we are in good hands and that her legacy will move forward. So on behalf of myself, the Scottish Conservative Unionist Group on the council and the region, thank you, ma'am. May you rest in peace.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. Can I now ask councillor, on behalf of councillor Dryborough as Armed Forces Champion, to say a few words?
Firstly, may I thank councillor Davies for speaking on my behalf. I'm heading down to Swansea for the absolute national seminar by car, and do not want to miss out on what I would say if connection is lost. As many members here are aware, as a former serving soldier and as Armed Forces Champion to Dumfries and Galloway Council, I wanted to say a few words about Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth, what she meant to me and many serving and ex-serving Forces members across the region, the United Kingdom and the Commonwealth. Before I do, I wanted to echo the appreciation to staff for what they have done to allow communities to remember and show their admiration and love for our Queen, and also to wish His Majesty, King Charles III, our support for rein over this difficult period. Members, Queen Elizabeth as a monarch showed great presence, dignity, in some cases, a great restraint over her 70 years as our monarch. She was the Commander-in-Chief of our Armed Forces. Quite simply, to us, she was known as the Boss. There is a lot to be said about the stature of a monarch within the forces, and we just simply loved the support and encouragement she gave us whether in conflict or at peace. Teamwork is a huge part of military life, and to see what Her Majesty did for that team of all arms of the forces is astounding and very well appreciated. And our Forces personnel were extremely happy with the team leader. They absolutely adored her. Whilst Her Majesty will be sadly missed and mourned, we will celebrate her life and commitments. We shall look forward to the reign of King Charles, and we, as servants and not personnel, will sustain that commitment to him as he goes forward in his new and ever-changing world. Can I thank, thank again councillor Stitt for saying this on my behalf. God bless Her Majesty. May she rest in eternal peace, and God save the King.
Thanks, councillor Stitt. Could I now invite, I don't know which one of you wants to go first, but, okay, so Kid Experience Youth councillor Sophie Wilson, Locker Word Youth councillor Riley Drew and Kenzie Miller as well. So on you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Convenor. On behalf of Dumfries and Galloway Youth Council, we would like to express our deepest condolences to the Royal Family in light of the passing of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II.
There is no denying that the Royal Family have had a significant impact on the opportunities available to young people in Dumfries and Galloway in a way that is often not seen. The Prince's Trust and the Duke of Edinburgh Award are initiatives that have had a positive impact throughout the region, supporting young people into employment, higher and further education and more generally to access opportunities that would have not been available to them otherwise.
Looking forward, His Majesty, King Charles III, has a focus on climate change and environmental issues, and we are optimistic as we move into the next chapter that young people will continue to benefit from the existence and provision of these programmes and others like it in Dumfries and Galloway. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've heard from the speakers on the list, but I'm sure other members, if they feel so minded, are welcome to come in and speak. Councillor McCammon?
Since last Thursday, I've heard many people comment that they didn't consider themselves a royalist and that their emotional reaction to the sad news of the Queen's passing caught them by surprise. I'm one of those people. I feel genuine sadness and grief for someone I never met. The late Her Majesty the Queen was a remarkable woman who sacrificed so much for us, and certainly in her early years of reign, forced to reach a balance of monarch and mother. She has been a constant figure in our households, one we might even be guilty of taking for granted. A familiar face, you would be forgiven for thinking you knew her personally well. But I believe we all never saw a snippet of the endearing character, her endearing character. It is true, she was our Queen, but in the days after her death, we have been gently reminded she was also a daughter, a sister, a mother, a grandmother and a great-grandmother, and she did all of the above with wonderful grace and love. I've been very fortunate to attend several events where the Queen was present, and my personal favourite being one of our garden parties at Holyrood Palace a couple of years back. On Sunday, it was an honour to stand with my husband Finlay and other MSPs outside Scottish Parliament to watch our coffin enter Holyrood Palace one last time, and it was intensely emotional seeing the thousands of people line the streets of Edinburgh to pay their respects. Her Majesty the Queen held Scotland very close to her heart, and the very fact she chose Scotland to spend her final days fills me with immense pride. So as she says her final goodbye to Scotland today, we will be eternally grateful for Her Majesty's outstanding life of service to our country and to the Commonwealth. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, councillor McCammon. Councillor Drysdale?
Good morning, members. Good morning, Convenor. Thank you very much for the opportunity today in letting me speak. Excuse me. First of all, may I apologise for not being there in person. I'm actually on parent care this week to give my mother some respite, so I am speaking to you from Ayrshire this morning. Thank you. I'd like to thank the South West audio team for the wonderful video. It really was wonderful to see the Queen in our region over the last few years. She was a dedicated public servant in many ways. HRH Queen Elizabeth was a truly incredible monarch, who represented our country with strength, dignity, valour and courage. I was most fortunate to have been present in the Royal Mile on Sunday and experience the massive outpouring of emotions, joint empathy, pride and shared love for her. Indeed, we are all so utterly blessed to have lived while she was our Queen. Selfless, wise, compassionate and a true figurehead. Deep condolences go out to the Royal Family at this very, very difficult time. Rest in peace, Your Majesty, and long live the King. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Drysdale. Councillor Slater?
Yes, I'd just like to say a few short words. After more than 70 years of devoted service, I wish to express my sadness at the passing of Her Majesty the Queen and say thank you, ma'am. I was also lucky enough to film the Queen when she came here in 2010 to open the plainstains. I made a short film of that, and I'm really lucky to have that for future years in my archive, and obviously if you wish to see it, you can. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much and God save the King.
Thank you, councillor Slater. Councillor Wilson?
Thank you, Convenor, and I'll just apologise, because I'm shaken already, but good morning. And I'd firstly like to associate myself with many of the remarks made by others in this special meeting of field council, and thank those who have contributed as we pay tribute to Her Late Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. I'd also like to thank councillor Doorward for attending the service yesterday in St Giles and representing Dumfries and Galloway. Despite her historically long reign and long life, it was still a shock to learn of the Queen's passing, who for most of us had been the only Queen, the only monarch we had ever known. It is a testament to her service and sense of duty that we have seen so many pay their respects to her from all age groups. When I told my five-year-old daughter, she cried and said she just wanted her Queen back, it struck me how Her Late Majesty could connect with all generations. I won't mention how my 24-year-old son took the news for fear of embarrassing him, although some in this room witnessed this firsthand on Sunday at the proclamation of King Charles III. As we continue to observe this period of national mourning, this is my way of paying tribute to Her Late Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and I'm extremely proud of my younger brother, who, having served our country for nearly 20 years in the Armed Forces, will play a military role in her funeral on Monday. I wish to acknowledge and express my gratitude for Her Late Majesty's long reign and exemplary service, for the times in which she lived and for her very generation. Her Majesty gave her life to the service of our country and in doing so was able to connect with so many people in our region. I saw this firsthand as a young teenager when Her Majesty visited Lockerbie in 1993 to meet families affected by the Lockerbie air disaster, and many of those who responded on the night and the weeks and months that followed. Although there was criticism that the visit four and a half years later after the disaster came too late, Her Majesty took the time to listen to relatives and survivors and even extended her visit. It was also one of the few occasions where she showed emotion and distress at the loss and suffering. To the entire Royal Family who are mourning the loss of a mother, grandmother and great-grandmother, as well as our staff, I extend my condolences. To Their Majesties the King and Queen, I wish them well. Rest in peace, Queen Elizabeth II, and thank you for everything.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. Councillor Dinerley?
I'd like to say a few words in respect of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth and her service to the community for more than 70 years of selfless and steadfast dedication to the country and the Commonwealth, to the deaf community in the UK and all over the world. In 2010, in Cuckoobury Town, the Queen visited, and as she passed, I waved to her and the Queen smiled in response to me waving. There's been a history of the Royal Family, a strong association with the deaf community. Her Majesty's mother-in-law, Princess Alice of Denmark and Greece, was herself deaf from birth. She devoted her life to public service and voluntary vitally important issues, from conservation of wildlife and the environment, to opportunities for future generations and young people who will look up to her as a role model and carer of love of all, regardless of background or where people came from. Her Majesty will continue in this way, but I hope that her legacy will be that people will carry on in this vein, and I would really like to say God save the Queen and long live King Charles III.
Thank you, councillor Dinerley. Councillor Dempster?
Thank you, Leader. One of my abiding memories as a child was being at school and being given the coronation mug as a keepsake, something I still have today, and I treasure those memories and all of the memories, I'm sure everyone does, of the service our Queen has given to this region and to this country over many, many decades, something that I imagine was very, very difficult to repeat. I've been privileged to serve Her Majesty as a special constable and as a member of the Train Fire Service. I take great pride in that, and in living in a royal borough or a former royal borough, I feel that we have constant links with the Royal Family. And on behalf of the constituents in my ward, and I'm sure everyone in Dumfries and Galloway and in the country, my condolences to King Charles III. May our Queen rest in peace. God save the King. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dempster. Councillor Scobie?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair, for coming through to Stronrau on Sunday to make the proclamation and also to lay the wreath at the War Memorial. I do bring the condolences of the people from Stronrau at this sad time. It has been said that the Queen was a daughter, sister, mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, and it must be difficult for her family to grieve just now, given all that's going on in the country just now. What I want to say is that the Queen was fond of Stronrau, as the film illustrated the number of occasions that she visited Stronrau. So she had her priorities right. I can well think of the conversation that she would be having with Donny Nelson as they opened, or visited Agnew Park, what was once the Toon Dump, up the Clay Hole in Stronrau, and I'm sure Donny would have made that point to her, and she would have no doubt replied how magnificent an achievement Stronrau and the council had done in Agnew Park, and I'm sure Vlad can testify to that on his visit as well. I believe the Queen saw them through a prism of the families, and that's illustrated and demonstrated in Agnew Park, and she was a family person, as the stories are now coming out in the national media. I'm sure she will rest in peace, and we will all think of the Queen and all that she was to all of us.
Thank you, councillor Scobie. Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Convenor. Just something short. I have a love for the olden days, and that's because I grew up with parents that are the same age, who are still here, very lucky, and with relatives that had lived through the war and had older values, and maybe that's partly why, with a heavy heart, I've really felt the loss of our Queen. And I know that she'll be missed by many across the world. Her wonderful smile and elegance, her passion and diligence, all remarkable and a role model for so many. I hope that in her memory, her strong values and hopes that she believed in will live on and will not be forgotten. God save the King. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hill? I don't see anybody else indicating a wish to speak. So with that, I will ask if members are happy to note that the contributions of the members of Dumfries and Galloway Council and the Youth Council on the passing of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II will be reflected in the letter of condolence sent to His Majesty, King Charles III, by the Convenor and Deputy Convenor, after the state funeral and National Day of Mourning. I would also propose, if members are minded, that we invite community groups and individuals to send in any photographs of the Queen in our region to form part of our archive and to put together a short film that we can share on our website in which individuals, groups and schools could come together and reflect. Are we happy to do that? Okay, thank you. That takes us on to the next item, which is item four, Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth's state funeral on Monday, 19th September 2022, public holiday arrangements. We're being asked here to consider public holiday arrangements announced by UK government to coincide with Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II's state funeral and to mark the last day of the period of national mourning. I think we have Stuart Clanican, HR Manager, and Mike Shepley as Head of People and Transformation here to assist members with any questions. Do members have any questions or contributions? Okay, I think we can maybe go straight to the recommendations in that case, which is to, I beg your pardon, councillor Ian Carruthers?
I hope the signals are good enough that you can hear me. It's in relish to 4.3.1 in the report, I think, to be accurate in regards to any points that we make, and it talks about if anyone is required to work on 19th September this year, they will receive additional day leave, which can be taken in lieu and so on and so forth. Just in regards to, because a couple of my constituents have been in touch with me who are very keen to have that day off, so does this apply to absolutely every member of staff within the council, or are some staff entitled to this day and not others? As a starter, please, Chair. Eliot?
Thanks, councillor Carruthers. Mike, are you able to assist in answering that question? that question, please?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the question, councillor Carruthers. With regards to the statement in 4.3.1, quite clearly, the Scottish government has asked all local authorities that they make every endeavour to allow staff to participate in commemorating the reign of Queen Elizabeth II and the final day of National Mourning. So the report here wishes to express that every opportunity will be given to every member of staff. Clearly, there will still be some requirements to commit to the delivery of essential services, and obviously, that will be agreed in conjunction with the relevant line managers and the members of staff.
Thanks, Mike. Does that answer your question, Ian?
Thanks, thanks, leader. No, not really. It adds some information, so I'll be more specific. The two departments have been in touch with me through my constituents, the roads department and the waste department, so some of them are very keen to take the day off to mourn. So just in regards to, say it was the roads or the waste departments across Dunfermline Galway council. I know we apply a certain set of circumstances Christmas and New Year time, leader. So just for that point in particular, I mean, some are really vets because they feel they've got to be made and forced to work. So just to understand that point, I think we should look to accommodate every member of staff we possibly can.
Okay, thank you, Ian. Mike, are you able to take into account that additional day?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Carruthers. I am of the understanding that everybody will be given the opportunity, as I say, and certainly with regards to the reference to waste, I'm not aware of anybody who will be forced to work or made to work as a description, and that the council is given the opportunity to, all members of staff, to, as I say, take part in the events of 19th September.
Thanks, Mike. Ian, does that assist a wee bit further?
It absolutely does. If that's a cast iron guarantee that every member of staff are entitled to that, and if they wish to take it, they can, I'm more than happy with that. So if I find out any different, I would have the opportunity to come back and take that up as a local councillor. Thank you, leader.
Thank you. Any further questions on the report? councillor Dempster?
I don't know that that's what Mike actually said. And if we have a service that has to be delivered, we can't possibly do it if everyone who wants time off can take time off. Now, I appreciate that's what we're saying as an authority, but at the same time, we have a duty to deliver services such as social work, and we're seriously saying that for one day we're not going to see a client who maybe desperately needs them. And I don't think that's the approach this council should take. We should absolutely entitle every member of staff who can take the day off to take it, should they wish. And it is a national holiday, but these members of staff are required, for whatever reason, to work. We'd get the same time off on another day to reflect on the contribution Her Majesty made during her reign. I'm just concerned that we are saying anyone who wants time off can take it. That may well shut down services that people actually need.
Thanks, councillor Dempster. I think we're understanding that essential services will still be able to be delivered. But Mike, I don't know if you want to just help make that crystal clear for the benefit of members? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, in terms of clarifying, anybody who is required to work to deliver essential services, as has previously been the case, will be asked to work, and that discussion will take place between the individual and their line manager. But the report is stating that wherever possible out with essential services, then council services will be closed for that day of mourning on the 19th of September. So out with the delivery of essential services, and again, those will be identified across the council.
Thank you. Does that help you, councillor Dempster?
I was more trying to help councillor Carruthers than help me. That's what I understood would be the case. I just don't want anyone to think that we are going to shut down services for a day completely if there's a need or a requirement for some of the more essential services to go ahead.
Okay, thank you. councillor Karen Carruthers?
Thank you, Chair. It's just on the back of both Ian and Jim. I mean, I fully understand, obviously, working for the NHS, that essential services have to carry on, albeit it may be skeleton staff. However, what I want clarity and guarantee on is the fact for them people that do have to work it, they get a day in lieu to take at their convenient opportunity. So again, just reflecting in the NHS, if you work a public holiday or this type of holiday that we've just been given, the people who work get paid extra, but you also get the chance to take a day back in lieu. So that's the kind of thing for the people who are working. I want to know that they're not going to miss out on a day off to take it at their convenience.
Thanks, Karen. I think 4.3.1, which I think sort of started this conversation, sort of sets that out. So if you are required to work on 19th of September, there will be an additional day of leave which can be taken in lieu. Mike, is that just to triple confirm that that's the case, please?
Thank you, Chair. I can confirm that's exactly stated in 4.3.1.
And that's across the whole council, all departments?
Yes, yes. It's all council.
Okay. Does that satisfy you, Karen? Okay. With that...
Thank you, Chair. Yes, it does.
I don't see any further questions, so if we can go to the recommendations, which is to note... Sorry, I beg your pardon. councillor Ian Carruthers, do you wish to come back in?
I can make the recommendation 2.3 if you wish, leader. Happy to do that. It's on that specific point.
Very well, okay. So if we can note, the UK and Scottish governments have announced that Monday, 19th September 2022 is the date of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II's state funeral and will be a national bank holiday as detailed in paragraph 3.1. Happy to note? Thank you. Two, to agree the proposal in section four of the report to grant additional days leave so that staff and pupils at school may show their mark of respect on Monday, 19th of September 2022. Happy to agree? Thank you. And three, we're being asked to note that, subject to the discussion at 2.2 above being approved, there's no additional financial provision required. This would effectively be a partial loss of productivity on Monday, 19th of September. councillor Carruthers, did you want to adjust that?
I just find the fact flexible enough in regards to the, I suppose, the information we've heard from, I think, Mr Shepley in particular. So if, going back to the point just made there by councillor Karen Carruthers, is that, actually, I think we're entitled, if somebody's working a bank holiday Monday, then entitled to the day in lieu is being specified within the report. But I think there's an enhancement entitlement there as well. I think what we are saying is there's no enhancement at all in regards to working a bank holiday other than you get the day back. But going back, I've certainly got no qualms whatsoever with what councillor Dempster's saying in regards to some services are absolutely essential, whether it's social work and so on and so forth, and they will have to turn up. There's no two ways about that. I was quite specific in regards to the two I was talking about where I've been lobbied on. So, Chair, it was only those two in particular. But I think we're tying our hands too much at 2.3 in regards to, if there has to be an enhancement, which I thought there'd be a right, as our employees would have that right, to work that extra day, they would get the day back. These are the small enhancements in regards to that. Leader, I'll take your advice to your council on that.
I think what I'm looking really here is that we note that, subject to the decision we've already taken at 2.2, that there's no financial provision required. So do you have an issue with that in particular? Because it seems relatively straightforward. But I mean, except that you may have a different view that we need to tease out.
Thanks. So it's, I would think, quite often we're told that noting is agreeing. So I agree with that statement. So that's what I'm coming for, leader. And I would agree. Maybe it's advice when you can needn't thought. I would have thought there's an entitlement of an enhancement if particularly, say, somebody from social work is called out on that day, they should have been off. But they have to react to a certain situation. The entitlement enhancement, we're saying there's no extra cost in regards to this. It just, it's clarification in regards to that. But by noting, you're absolutely, I'll be as well for this conversation before in the past, that we are agreeing to that at the same time. So I think there's a conflict here.
Do you have a specific question you want to answer, Ian?
Is there a financial resource implications? I believe there is, leader.
Mike, I don't know if you could help it just in terms of that specific point about, is there actually a financial implication in terms of what we'd agreed and what we might be noting?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Carruthers. The collective agreement is clear that the day in lieu is a notional double time in pay and time off. But again, the report has been put together with regards to the statements within the collective agreement. No enhanced payments are made anywhere in the system. The day in lieu is the compensation for working.
Okay, thanks. So I'm understanding that reasonably clearly, councillor Ian Carruthers, but is that... Do you accept that now?
I accept that as a statement of fact. This is not my understanding, but I do accept that. Thank you, leader.
So with that, then, are we happy to note 2.3? Okay, thank you.
Does that mean I get a day off day?
So that takes us to the end of the meeting in just about. I've no items of urgent business deemed urgent as being advised at the start of the meeting. Vice convener?
Can I ask everybody who is able to stand to do so? God save the King.
God save the King.
That concludes the business for today. Thank you for your contributions.
Thank you.